I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. We would like to call the meeting of the Shreveport City Council to order. Going to ask that if you have your cellphones, if you'd be kind enough to silence them or turn them off at this time. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please? We're going to have the prayer by Councilwoman Taylor and Councilman Jackson will lead us in the pledge. I'm sorry.
Merciful Father, we give you thanks on this day. As we proceed with this meeting, we ask that you would give us wisdom and guide us as we handle city business. We pray for all of those that may be sick or grieving under the sound of our voice. Pray for all of our employees, that they will conduct the business of the city as you would have it. This is your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, united, sovereign, just for all.
Now, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Taylor, present. Councilwoman Fuller, here. Councilwoman Decker, here. Councilman Jackson, here. Councilman Decker, here.
I'm here. Thank you. Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of administrative conference and special meeting Monday, September 12, 2022, and city council meetings Tuesday, September 13, 2022. Does any member of the council have any awards, recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
Do I actually want to call Keith Hansen up, please?
Good afternoon.
I want you to give us a status update on the cameras, where we are, where we look as far as installation, please, sir.
So, last week, we just received the iteration two of our enclosures, or the box that contains all the guts of the camera system on the pole. We just received those yesterday, I mean, I'm sorry, last week on Thursday. We have been since troubleshooting an issue between the new enclosures hardware and our Raspberry Pi. I suspect we should be done with that this week, but we've ruled out a lot of causes for the problem, but haven't found the solution yet.
Okay. When you talk about, just the last comment that you made in reference to that, I think for me, what is the timeline that we look at for installation across the city for these cameras?
So, barring this issue, we now understand, I understand exactly the procedure on the pole. We go up, we cinch the box, they go up, they put the power loop down, we go back up and connect that power loop through conduit into our enclosure. They would have already been starting to hang, but once we started looking at that process of pulling that conduit into the enclosure, there's just not a lot of room in the small cases we created. That is on me. I just did not understand that process on the pole. But now that we do, we've started shifting, and I have, I have the boxes so you could visually see what I'm talking about if you want to. But now that we understand that, the larger boxers, the larger enclosures are the way to go. And so, we'll be, there is an incremental cost we'll be covering with ARP funds to cover a bigger enclosure, so that makes this process easy on the pole.
So, what are we looking at for its timeline of installation?
My, so, I can only tell you what my experience has been so far, but let's say I'm right and we finish debugging these issues this week, same week, I'm submitting the big box enclosure for approval by Swepco, our utility partner. And from there, that's usually a couple of days. It did not take very long, the first time we got it approved. I think they'll like these enclosures a lot better than the other ones, frankly, anyway, so there's a stronger chance that we shouldn't see another issue. And then from there, we're already, like, our contractor who's building the enclosure is also going up the pole to mount, so they'll know this inside and out when they get up there. They've already scoped out the first four poles that we want to hang on. I think we're probably weeks away, but I'm, as you can tell, a little gun shy of any commits, just with how many small things have held us up so far.
So, the next 30 to 45 days, are we looking at four to five cameras? Are we looking at 10 cameras?
My hope is, once we prove that we understand what those first four poles are like, how long that takes, et cetera, we'll be scheduling cameras every single week to go up thereafter.
Okay. And that's with the mapping of what you have from the Shreveport Police Department?
Yes, ma'am.
Or any other data that you have from the real-time crime center? Am I correct?
Those are all prioritized by SPD.
Okay. So, my second question then becomes, do we have any partnership with DOTD?
Currently, we're working on connecting their cameras to our system. It requires a special VPN from them, but once we get that set up, we will be recording the DOTD feeds to disk.
Do we know how long that timeframe that we're looking at? Because this is my concern. We've had two shootings on the interstate, and I don't want people to be afraid to drive on the interstate.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I know that we were working with some type of agreement with DOTD, so I'm looking at what's the timeframe and how soon can we have these cameras up and operable? If we're still waiting on something from Swepco and on our end, can we move towards getting these other cameras up? Because I want, don't want anyone to feel unsafe while they're traveling back and forth on our interstates.
Yes, I suspect sometime late this week, if not late next week, we should have everything we need from DOTD to connect into their system securely.
Okay.
And then pull those feeds in, and this is why I brought Kevin up. Do you have the number on DOTD? How many feeds we have there?
We monitor...
We can monitor them. We can't record them right now, which is the useful part. Like, we much prefer recording.
Correct. We also pull in a few of Bozier, because that's, there's some main thoroughfares that hit Shreveport and Bozier very often. It seems necessary for us to watch, kind of catch things. So, we monitor 32 right now. That's City Shreveport, all of them, and certain Bozier feeds, because, you know, we do have traffic back and forth, where we're able to get on calls coming from Bozier, coming in, that we can let SPD know about or monitor, get ahead of them. So, we like to try to monitor all the Shreveport feeds, plus about four or five of the Bozier feeds. So, that's about 32 feeds right now that we're monitoring hourly, daily, constantly.
So, we can monitor, but we can't record?
Correct.
Correct. So, when we, when we have the meeting with DOTD and set up the partnership there, then we will be able to record.
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct.
Okay. Can you give us an update next council meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
If that has already taken place? Because I want to make sure that we get that up and operable. And also, the status report of when the first set of other additional cameras will be going on, and the timeline of what we're looking at, and giving that update from SPD.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other council member have any special guests? Mr. Whitehorn, do you have any communication?
We'll have some tomorrow. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Does any member have any concerns for property standards from Mr. Green?
Chairman?
Yes.
I would just like to ask that, between Mr. Green and the administration, can you be prepared tomorrow to discuss 114 Texas, as well as Fairfield Oaks, whatever we're able to talk about with Fairfield Oaks? Because I know that might be limited. I don't want to put through it twice this week, but we could talk about that tomorrow. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller?
That was a big part of our discussion this morning in staff meeting.
I can imagine. I've got the months of emails between us trying to do something about it.
Yeah.
I was just going to ask Chief, on the litigation with Fairfield Oaks, if you had some particular questions, we may be able to fill those out beforehand?
All I'd like to know tomorrow for the public is if there's been anything, anything that we can talk about on the record concerning the removal. I know that we probably can't get into a lot because of the pending, but if there's something that we can say that lets the public know that we are trying to come to some conclusion, that's, that's why I didn't want to try to talk about it today, just so you can get to the specifics that are allowed tomorrow. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else from Mr. Green? Thank you, Mr. Green. Ms. Clark, do you, will you have master plan report tomorrow?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is there, will we receive a budget of financial report tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Public hearings, none. Mr. Whitehorn, would there be any legislation added to the agenda tomorrow?
None that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Today, we will hear public comments on non-agenda items, as well as agenda items. You have three minutes to speak. The vice chair will call your name, and he will also control the term.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, Chief, Ken Criff, 157 Archer Avenue, Shreveport 71105. I just chased Keith Hanson down, invited him to come film me on Facebook and livestream it a week from tomorrow night at National Night Out, at Mike and Tony LeBlanc's house at 139 Archer Avenue at 7:00 PM. In my Thomas Jefferson costume, I'm going to recite the Declaration of Independence for memory, about eight and a half minutes. Then at 7:30, at the same address, the same night, I'm going to recite Dr. King's "I Have a Dream" speech, about 11 minutes. Invite anybody who wants to come see it. Try to get there a few minutes before 7:00 or 7:30, if you want to see the second one. And it should be pretty neat. I don't think any municipal website has both of these speeches on their websites. I couldn't find it. More immediately, day after tomorrow is Good Neighbors Day. There was an article in the Shreveport Times last Thursday, the 20th, and it was Cassandra Colaway came to my house and some other houses in town, and it's Good Neighbors Day. And you can get a goodie bag at Shreveport Greens Headquarters, 2600 Block of Southern Avenue. I think it starts at 9:00 or 10:00 AM, and you've got a lot of nice little things in there, and just beat be neighborly. So, we have, we have the Good Neighbors Day in two days, and in eight days, we have National Night Out. And some reminders, which I want to do, because I think these things are important. Y'all should pass an ordinance to raise the pay of the mayor and the council. Wouldn't be effective until 2026. Recapping, the first pay was set in the '78 city charter, raised 12 years later in 1990, raised 12 years later in '02, and not since. So, even if y'all do it for '26, it will have been 24 years between raises, and I think, I think the council salary and the mayor's salary are both inadequate for what y'all do. A second quick reminder, I really think the long-term health, the Health Care Trust Fund would be better if y'all would pass a resolution, ask the delegation, not just Northwest Louisiana, but the whole state. I really think municipal and parish workers would benefit by joining the State Officer Group benefits. Why not? Lower premiums, lower deductibles, better benefits, lower co-pays. Another item which I brought up before is y'all might want to have a city charter review committee at some point. It's been years since that's been done. As I've said, the parish does it by its own charter every four years. That would be a good provision when we finally do review our charter, to review it every four years, or even every eight years, but it's been almost 20. And lastly, this may be on the website, are the budget hearings set yet? The 2023, not the public hearing, but the budget hearing, is that already set? Did I miss it? I, I don't do websites real well.
Oh, it's already set.
It's already set? Okay, well, just send me the date on that, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Four dates, it might be two dates.
Larry Henderson?
Good afternoon. I got...
Good afternoon.
Is this thing working? Does this work? Pinkish. You can draw the phone over?
Thank you.
Okay, so, let me... You know what? My name is Larry Henderson. I live at 1104 Gooseberry Hill. I applied last year to put a fence around my house, a six-foot fence, and I was denied by the ZBA. I don't think I was fairly denied. I told them that by denying me, they're, they're gonna, inflation's gonna catch up. Now, it costs twice as much. In 1920, I mean, 2020, I took the money out to put that fence up. Now, again, it costs twice as much, and it's not in my budget. I'm retired, so I'm looking to you guys for some help. I guess the ZBA works for y'all. I don't know who to go to. I've been trying to find out, so they denied me while, in the same meeting, granting another citizen the opportunity to raise his fence up from six feet to three feet. And I think if they're going to be the neighborhood association for the entire city, that they should be fair and, and treat everybody by the same rules. Regardless of the size of my lot, I have to pay taxes on that, and everybody has to, and we should be able to use it. I had a couple of neighbors come by and complain, come down, object, complaining that they wouldn't be able to see, but the only thing you're going to see past that fence is me and my property, whatever's going on there. I have dogs coming onto my property, I have people coming to my back door, I have grandkids, I have guard kids, I have myself, my family, and the only way I'm, I feel protected is to let my dogs go, when I'm out. And occasionally, they got into it with other dogs while they're out, when the dogs come across the street, cats. And I, that, I can't watch the dog and watch my grandkid too. I mean, I can, but it makes it harder. And so, it made hardship on me, and I just want, I just want what I feel is justice, some help putting that fence up. For it to cost twice as much, I, I just don't have it. And the ZBA made the decision, and whoever I need to talk to to perhaps get them to make it right, I'm good with that. I, I just think they should treat everybody fair. That's my statement.
Chairman?
Yes.
So, how many times did they defer and continue your case before they finally heard it?
They heard it in January, they deferred it to March, and they denied it. But technically, they denied it in January after going back and listening to it, because the only stipulation they gave me was in the code. And variance here is not a fundraiser, it's something to go different from the code, and the only option they gave me was the code, period. So, that was a waste, to me, that was a waste of money right there to start with.
I'm sorry that, that you had to go through such a drag, a long, drawn-out thing, but the, what was the reason that the, that your neighbors didn't want it?
She said she didn't want to look outside her house and see the fence. It's long. I have those same type of fences in my neighborhood, around the house from the front corner of the lot, going all the way around to the back. Not, my house doesn't have it, that's what I want, but there are other corner lots that have that. And when Mr. Jean, that worked for the ZBA, gave his description of, of the neighborhood, he didn't include that. So, I think I had to meet different criteria, different standards than what the guy that was approved before me did. And, and again, I just don't think it's fair. I, I think everybody, if you're going to be the neighborhood association for the city, you gotta be fair. You're elected official. You just got to be fair as an elected official, so...
Is this before us on appeal?
No.
You're just coming to speak on it?
Yeah. I, I have the permit now, because you guys, Mr. Clark and Mr. Jean that worked for the Metropolitan Planning Committee, they brought it to you guys, and you, you changed the rules. So, in March, I was able to get the permit, but the price had doubled. It's a year.
I see. No, the only thing I can add right now is that the ZBA is actually appointed, they're not elected.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry that, that you went through this tedium, and then we changed the rule, which made it all okay. That's the, the most I can offer you right now, because I understand what you're saying.
Okay. But I, I need some money. Now, who, who do I talk to about getting money that the people denied me? I understand they appointed, but they made a decision, they represent the city, so I shouldn't have to pay for their mistake. Okay.
Councilmember, councilmember.
And, and I'm sorry if my voice get elevated.
Well, look, I, I hear...
I apologize.
I hear your frustration, Mr. Henderson, and of course, it's our, it's our hope that every citizen be treated even-handedly. There is an appeal process for, for ZBA matters, and if, if the request is that we, we award you money from the city because the ZBA denied you permission to build your fence, I just, this is probably not the right forum for that conversation. This council, based on the showing you're making, doesn't have authority to do that, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And so, this is what I've, I've been through, I don't know how many meetings down here, and I've talked to a lot of people sitting in those chairs. Nobody can tell me what I need to do. And yet, my grandkid can't go out and play, and I feel that she's protected. I mean, I'm, it's not my fault. It's not my fault. I don't know what to do.
You, you could talk to a lawyer who could advise you of your options. That's, that's probably the best thing for you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
All right. Okay, that's all. That's it? Thank you. We'll have a, an executive appointment on tomorrow. There are no agenda items on the agenda today. Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with regular legislation?
Resolution 110, authorizing the marshal of the City Court of Shreveport to receive in addition to the salary paid to him by the City of Shreveport, the same fees as are payable to constables of the Justice of the Peace Courts, up to 50% of the salary paid by the City of Shreveport. Resolution 124, dedicating the 400 block of East 85th Street and honor Pastor Johnny L. Harden, Sr., and otherwise provided with respect thereto. Resolution 125, recognizing many things for allowing artists to showcase their talents in music and film.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comment on any of these items? Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
Mr. Whitehorn, legislation concerning the marshal's compensation has been previously postponed. Has the administration resolved its concerns, or will that be postponed again?
Ms. Danielle, can you answer that?
We have not. There was a request that an AG opinion be rendered on that, and so, we just asked the matter be tabled, and we can bring it back once we get the opinion back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on any of these items? Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to October 12, 2022?
Resolution 126, approving a modification to an annual payment in lieu of tax in accordance with the memorandum of understanding between Shreveport Home Mortgage Authority and SPC Development LLC.
Any questions on this item? Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to October 12, 2022?
Ordinance 138, amending the 2022 general fund budget. Ordinance 139 to amend section 90-518B of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to notices of civil violations. Ordinance 140 to amend section 90-519B of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to notice of hearings. Ordinance 141, zoning case number 22-122-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southeast corner of East Kings Highway and East 70th Street from R.A. Rural Agriculture Zoning District to C-4 Heavy Commercial Zoning District. Ordinance 142, zoning case number 22-146-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located north side of Pine Hill Road, approximately 570 feet east of Deveraux Road, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana. R-1-5 Single Family Residential Zoning District to XR-3 Multi-Family Residential Zoning District. Ordinance 143, zoning case number 22-150-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located southeast corner of Providence Place Boulevard and Chestnut Park Lane, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana. R-2 PUD Multi-Family Residential Zoning District to R-2 PUD Multi-Family Residential Zoning District. Zoning case number 144, I mean, ordinance number 144, zoning case number 22-162-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located southeast corner of Providence Place Boulevard and Chestnut Park Lane, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana. R-2 PUD Multi-Family Residential Zoning District to R-2 PUD Multi-Family Residential Zoning District. Zoning case number 144, I mean, ordinance number 144, zoning case number 22-162-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located east side of Lexington Avenue, approximately 110 feet south of Pyramid Road, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana. R-1-7 Single Family Residential Zoning District to C-1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District.
Are there any questions on any of these items or comments? Thank you. Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with ordinance on separate reading and final passage?
Ordinance 108, to revise chapter 78, article 5, standards of construction for parking lots of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative construction of parking lots. And there is one amendment. Ordinance 109, to amend various articles and section in the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code for the purpose of updating and revising the regulations for political science. Ordinance 130, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance 131, amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana 22, 2022 Capital Project Fund budget. Ordinance 132, declaring a public emergency in connection with the emergency repair at the Sludge Farm located 11,726 Harts Island Road. Ordinance 133, declaring a public emergency in connection with the emergency purchase of liquid chlorine for use in drinking water treatment process at the Amos Water Treatment Plant. Ordinance 134, closing and abandoning a 20-foot-wide alley dedication in Sanford Place, addition in section 12, Township 17 North, Range 114 West. Ordinance 135, changing the name of Red Fox Circle in the Moore Girls Circle subdivision in section 25, Township 17 North, Range 115 West, to God's Country. Ordinance 136, to amend various articles and section in the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code for the purpose of updating the use definitions, use standards, and parking requirements, respectively, pertaining to the retail sales of alcohol. Ordinance 137, to amend various articles and section in the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code relative to certificing requirements for parking lots.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on any of these items? Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today?
No.
Thank you. We've had our property standards. We have no property standards. Our ABO appeals today to consider. We have no MPC, a ZBA appeals to consider tomorrow. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk? Are there any reports from boards, officers, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk report?
Tomorrow.
Okay. We have requests from the city attorney at this particular time to go an executive session to discuss the following. Madam Clerk, would you read it into the record? Madam Clerk, would you read it into the record?
Chief Scott Peruzzi, AL versus City of Shreveport. The second is law review, first, City Transit Management, and the third one is seen to LLC versus Shreveport, City of Shreveport.
Do we have a motion to go in executive session?
It's moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Bowman. All in favor, that is, are there any questions to comment? Not, let's vote. Thank you. We're now in executive session.